You all can talk amongst yourselves. We're not ready yet. Oh, because we started at Rome. Wait, wait. Now I have to share. And that's a Rick Florida? Hold on Kyle, just a second. Switched on and off. Yeah? Okay, we'll have to do this. Yes?
Mayor Reese. Councilmember Osk. Councilmember Nelson. Gilbertson. Gardner. Baggerly. Davis. Butterfield. Sholdus. For the city council, there are seven present, two excused. Planning Commissioner Newberg. Poe. Buzzio. Dressler. Florida. Phil's Amy. There are five present, two absent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. We go to regular business and I'll follow up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, planning commissioners, focus group members, and our neighbors across the city of Willmar in greater Minnesota. We're here today because we did it. Today marks a pivotal milestone in the evolution of the With Willmar Comprehensive Plan. It is fitting to host this joint work session here at the Four Seasons Shelter at Robins Island. As it was voted one of the favorite places here in Willmar by survey responders. This work session is different from typical city council meetings as it will not involve any formal decision-making or voting. Instead, it serves as a unique opportunity to collaborate, brainstorm, pose questions, and dive deeper into the critical elements of the plan. Our intention today is to create an interactive and engaging space for open dialogue, where ideas and challenges shaping our future can be explored. Over the past 12 months, city council, city staff, consultants, and a variety of organizations have worked hand in hand to build on Willmar's strengths while identifying opportunities to address community needs and better position us as a regional hub. If you think back to last year, we actively collaborated with numerous organizations, attended community events, hosted focus group meetings, gathered surveys, and engaged engage the public through initiatives like Safe Streets for All, as well as the Bike, Pedestrian, and Trails Plan in partnership with Bolton and Mink and Tools Design. I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank each of the organizations whose names are now displayed on the screen. The Safe Streets for All and Bike, Pedestrian, and Trails Plans are integral parts to the Mobility Chapter of the With Willmar Plan, serving as appendices and being featured in today's presentation. Thanks to the extensive thanks to the extensive it's always a technical issue. Thanks to the extensive public engagement efforts and the feedback collected through surveys, we have successfully identified solutions that, when implemented, will enhance the livability and bring greater enjoyment to our neighbors who live, work, and visit Willmar. So what is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan serves as a guiding blueprint for Willmar's growth over the next 20 years. That's 2045. It identifies existing needs and establishes long-term goals to shape decision-making for the future. The planning process relied on public input and analysis of current conditions to uncover opportunities within the city. At its core, the plan focuses on policies and recommendations related to land use, ensuring a cohesive approach to development. So you probably ask yourself, why are we doing it? And is Willmar required to do a comprehensive plan under state statute? Unlike metro cities, Willmar is not mandated by state statute to produce a comprehensive plan. However, state law provides guidance for any community seeking to adopt and implement official controls such as zoning, land use regulations, and planning processes. According to state statute, a comprehensive plan should include a mix of policy statements, goals, standards, and maps that guide physical, social, and economic development of the community. Now let's dive into the With Willmar Comprehensive Plan. The plan is thoughtfully structured into key elements, each addressing current conditions and outlining future strategies for its respective focus area. Each chapter examines the planning needs of its elements while highlighting how these align with the goals identified by the community. The With Willmar Plan consists of a total of 11 chapters, so let's take a look at them now. Chapter one is Willmar Today. It analyzes the city of Willmar, including the history, demographics, data trends, and future projections of our community. Chapter two is our vision and goals. It establishes by public input, the vision statement, key goals, and guiding principles that will inform decision-making. Chapter three is our land use and development chapter. It outlines a vision, policies, and regulations for how land within the city will be used and developed to promote sustainable growth. Chapter four is arts and culture. It highlights strategies and initiatives to support and enhance the arts and cultural activities throughout the city. Chapter five is mobility, and we'll focus most of today, our time today, on mobility. So it analyzes analysis of the ability to move and access transportation throughout the city of Willmar. Chapter six is our housing chapter. It explores the availability, quality, and affordability of housing for all residents addressing current needs and planning for future growth. Chapter seven is economic development or economic opportunities. It's an assessment of policies and programs for economic growth in order to attract businesses, create jobs, and boost the overall economy of Willmar. Chapter eight is natural resources and resiliency. Our overview of existing natural resources and strategies to conserve and protect protect them in the future. Chapter nine is parks and open space. This is going to be a summary of current parks and recreational facilities and opportunities to support future investments. Chapter 10 is missing from the draft document. We're working with Willmar Municipal Utilities to provide an analysis of Willmar's public facilities, identifying existing conditions and planning needs. This chapter will be added during public comment. And chapter 11 is implementation. This is a chapter that is a plan for action of the strategies identified throughout the plan. As we explore the With Willmar Plan, it's valuable to consider who can benefit from it and how it might be utilized. It is recommended that the plan be used as a regular reference by city staff, boards, and commission as well as community members, including residents, business owners, and regional stakeholders. In addition to, it can serve as a resource for regional partners and prospective residents or business owners, offering insight into the city's long-term objectives. While the plan is designed as a 20-year roadmap, periodically amendments or updates every seven to 10 years are encouraged to adapt to the emerging technologies and address future needs. Let's take a closer look at the interest areas of those who will engage with this plan. The first one we have is residents, per residence. Some of the interests that they may have is, what is the plan to use for bacon lots next to my home? For business owners, the question might be, what economic development tools and resources are available to expand my business? For government partners, what is the city approach to managing natural resources? City staff, what are the actions we need to take to achieve the community's goals? And what are their, what are our priorities? And city council, what is the long-term policy guidance? And how does it inform decision-making? So lastly, I'd like to set our intention again for today and frame discussion ahead. Our focus will be on the identified needs and proposed solutions with active participation and engagement from our presenters. As a reminder, the draft document was released on March 18th, 2025, and is available for public review. And the public comment period remains open until April 11th. Public comments can be submitted directly to planning staff via email at planning@willmermn.gov or mail to City Hall or dropped off at City Hall. Here is the proposed public process schedule, which includes city council and planning commissioners. Please note that for April 22nd, we are going to request that we have another work session for April 22nd, starting earlier at 5:00 PM. Planning Commission will be updated on the plan after public comment on May 7th and may be requested to do an adoption, recommended for adoption to city council. City council will be briefed and called for a public hearing on May 19th and consideration to adopt the plan by city council on June 16th. I'll stop there. I would like to invite our city planner, Christopher Frank, to the podium, and then we'll go ahead and get started.
Alrighty. So I'm going to start off with the first chapter, which is titled Willmar Today, but I figured on my slides here I'd do a little bit of history mixed with Willmar Today, so this is Willmar Yesterday. I couldn't figure out how to incorporate this slide anywhere, so I just kind of made it its own little heading page because I thought it was pretty neat. I had to get it in here. This is kind of the aerial blueprints of the old switch station. You can see there in the bottom part of the picture is where all the trains would be circled around the switch bridge or whatever that would be called, but you also see here on the bottom right, the Colosseum-looking structure in the bottom right photo is that same switch station. So as a longtime Willmar resident who grew up here, it was neat to see these photos. The top right photo is the Old Depot where a lot of passenger trains used to come through Willmar. So Willmar has a rich history of immigration, beginning with those original European settlers, which settled the original town, and then continuing through today with a lot of the Latin Americans, East Africans, and other groups that have come in the last 50 years. Just for a little bit of history, around 1868, around 1868, the St. Paul and Pacific Railroad began surveying the land just south of Footlake. And while there's no one there yet, by 1880, the city had sprung up and the streets of Willmar were filled with many different European languages as settlers made their way to building Willmar. And then from the 1980s onward, thanks to Jenny O. Turkey Store, we had the major attraction for immigrant workers from Latin America, Somalia, Ethiopia, Sudan, and others. Looking back through history, you can see the population of Willmar, starting this graph, starting in around 1930s, was down around 6,000, and then saw impressive growth from the 30s through the 80s. Getting to the 1990s to the 2000s is when we started to slow down, but we still continue to grow and still continue to grow today, which is much different than many other surrounding greater Minnesota cities currently where a lot of our other peers in greater Minnesota are shrinking. And then our population by ethnicity is about 60% white, 25% Hispanic, about 10% African-American, and then about 5% other. And you're going to see some other stats along with our continuing growing population that is positively infected by our diversity. All those other towns around us are shrinking, but one of the things that keeps Willmar competitive and adding to our advantage and bringing in further business is an expanded workforce that we have to thank for the immigrants that have come to call Willmar home. You will see this reflected as well in the next, in the graph at the bottom for our age distribution. We see Willmar is only about 17.5% of 65 and older, about 25.5% of 18 and under, and then the majority of our residents are 57% are the 18 to 64 working force. You will see that that is much less than the rest of the county when it comes to the aging population and the workforce population. Ours are higher for workforce, lower for retired compared to the county, and the same with the well, the state has a larger workforce currently than us, but we are staying under the 65 and over category compared to Minnesota. So what does that mean? Just like the rest of the country right now and the rest of the world, the baby boomer generations are starting to retire and everyone's birth rates are dropping, so we're trying to figure out how do we maintain our economy and grow the same way we had for the last 80 years since World War II? And nobody can really do that, but Willmar is doing better than a lot of the other surrounding areas. And again, part of that is thanks to that diverse population and workforce that we have. This top graph is just a reflection of our population and households and household sizes. So along with the same, the rest of the country, we're going through the same issue as well where as our population has slowed, our households haven't exactly slowed at the same pace, where households keep getting higher and higher as well. And you can see that household total size, so the amount of people that are living in each household continues to shrink more and more. So even though our population growth is slowing, our demand for households or livable units or houses or apartment buildings continues to grow and is not slowing. And I'll touch on that last figure. When you look at Willmar, our homeownership versus renting, we are much higher on the renting side than the state or the county. We're at almost 40% renting and 60% owning. So that's one thing we would like to address going into the future is figuring out how to get more housing available and then how to get that diverse workforce that is giving us our competitive advantage as a city into those houses to build equity and make sure that they stay in Willmar and keep calling Willmar home. So when we were putting together this plan, we came up with this cool acronym. Mr. Corbett came up with this acronym for With Willmar. The W in With stands for work, the I is innovation, the T is thrive, and then the H is home for a place to call home. So this has been the, this is our vision statement for the comprehensive plan. Work with Willmar. Willmar is a strong and ever-evolving regional hub for southwest Minnesota. And then we need to continue to provide resources to supply that diverse workforce with new opportunities. Innovating with Willmar. We need to continue our strong relationships with regional collaborations and stakeholders to elevate our culture of opportunity. So a lot of this is anything from small businesses with you know, in downtown or anywhere, or all the way up to Midwest Campus where, you know, we're leading in a lot of agricultural technology. Thrive with Willmar. Residents and visitors benefit from a clean, healthy, and energy-efficient Willmar, so we need to continue to maintain those health standards for the population. And then Willmar is home. Our neighborhoods are diverse, accessible, and safe with housing and services, service offerings for individuals and families. We need to continue to, like I said, get people into the homes they need, get the infrastructure that they need to be secure in Willmar and continue to feel safe in Willmar and call Willmar home. Throughout this document, you'll be seeing these key goals and principles. These first chapters just lay out the broad overview of the key goals of the comprehensive plan, which of course are safety, economy, infrastructure, community, housing, recreation, and engagement. So a lot of these, as you're reading these chapters, they'll go through kind of these key goals and/or principles and touch on how does this chapter affect this key goal? Which you'll get to the principles. You'll see more of this, and the four main principles we settled on were sustainability, inclusivity, innovation, and resilience. So sustainability, how do we embrace sustainable practices to protect our natural resources and ensure a healthy environment for future generations? Inclusivity, we need to value diversity and promote inclusivity, ensuring all residents feel welcome, respected, and that they can thrive. Innovation, encourage innovation and creativity to drive progress and adapt to the changing needs of our community. And then resilience, build a resilient community, prepare to face challenges, and embrace opportunities for growth and improvement. Like I said, these principles especially will be in each chapter, and then there'll be discussion of how that chapter relates directly to those principles, which we will be getting to the first one here with mobility shortly. First, we are going to play the vision statement video that we put together that has been up on the website. Some of you may have already seen it, but we figured this was a good spot to play this for everyone to see.
Have you all saw this already? Online?
There's still a little bit to get out of it, although it's alright, so that was before I get into mobility here, that was the Willmar Today chapter along with our vision and goals. Does anyone have any initial questions or comments before I move on to the next chapter? Anybody have any other fun historical Willmar facts that they want to add to the conversation? Alright. I'll go into mobility. So the mobility chapter is going to regard all things transportation in the city, so it's not just roads, it's roadways, who has jurisdiction over them, bicycle transport and recreation. So how well do our streets and trails allow you to traverse around the city and then what is available for recreation? Trails, similar, but this one is more aimed at pedestrian traffic, so walking traffic rather than biking, along with biking. Our freight system, so we obviously are Willmar, we have a very large freight presence. And then public transit, so there'd be a piece with CCT and other forms of public transit in here. So here is those guiding principles that I brought up. Like I said, each chapter will go through these. But you can see for mobility, kind of the sustainability is what Willmar should be doing. We should promote active transport by investing in pedestrian cycling infrastructure to create what are called complete streets and trails to navigate the city as a whole. Complete Streets is a program that aims to essentially connect the city as a whole, so no matter what type of transportation you're using, you can effectively and safely navigate the city. Second one would be enhance public transit by expanding and improving networks. And the third for sustainability would be reduce emissions by implementing traffic calming measures and promoting a walkable environment. So those are just some of the broad brushstrokes for how mobility can promote sustainability. There's inclusivity, so Willmar should promote accessible transportation services and infrastructure to ensure accessibility to people with disabilities, older adults, and vulnerable populations. Provide equitable access to transportation by addressing disparities in underserved communities. Engage with the entire community to ensure feedback is gathered from all segments of the population and diverse community members are included in the planning and decision-making process. Then for innovation, mobility will be aiming to utilize data analytics and new technologies to improve transportation planning and decision-making and test new mobility solutions through pilot programs to evaluate effectiveness of those planning programs. And finally, resilience, we will diversify our transportation options to promote systems that are less reliant on personal vehicle travel and two, to develop transportation plans for emergency and disaster responses. We will be going through two of the main studies or plans that our city is currently working on regarding mobility are the Safe Streets for All Plan, which looks at all road users and their vulnerabilities, so that's driving, biking, walking. And then we also have pedestrian, bike, and trails planned in the works right now too. We will have two presenters for each of these plans to discuss improvements that can be made through those plans. And I will call up Aaron Bartling with Bolton and Bank, who is running the Willmar Safe Streets for All Plan. And you can take over from me.
Thanks, Chris. So like you said, my name is Aaron Bartling. I am a senior transportation planner. So like you said, my name is Aaron Bartling. I am a senior transportation planner with Bolton and Mank, and I'm the project manager for the Safe Streets for All or Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan that we'll be talking through here today. So just getting started with what that is, and I know there's been an update on this a couple of months ago now, so I won't get too into the details because hopefully you're somewhat familiar with the project overall, but essentially looking at the overarching goal, it's to create safer streets for all road users and minimize the risk of life altering crashes on the transportation system within the city limits. Uh, why is Wilmer looking at this and why is Wilmer completing a safety action plan? Essentially, um, the city was awarded a grant back in twenty twenty-three to complete this plan. And then we began work. Uh, coming up on a year ago now, last summer, uh, when we started this process um to complete the safety action plan. And then I failed to update that slide or that last bullet point there, but we'll be looking to adopt this plan along with the with Wilmer comprehensive plan here in the very near future. So we're excited to talk through the final results of that and some of the strategies and recommendations that are coming out of the plan. So looking at the overall scope, just to uh a reminder of kind of the process we went through. So like I said, we started last summer and it really started with engaging with the community and stakeholders to start getting an understanding of what are the current challenges and issues that exist today. Uh, and along with that, we started the safety analysis work and the transportation equity review, which I'll touch on here in a slide to really start diving into the data and get an understanding of where their concerns, problem areas that exist on the transportation system today. From there, we uh went into the identification of what we call a high injury network. Uh, so essentially mapping out where those problem areas and corridors are on the system. And then from that, we were able to develop design concepts and start to prioritize projects that should move forward in the near future. And then um all of that's kind of put together in an overall action plan and then a safety commitment that will be adopted by the city as well, which I'll touch on later with the slides. So getting into a little bit of what we found and then I'll touch on what we heard from the public and stakeholders as well. Uh, so with the safety analysis, we actually did a ten year crash analysis going back to twenty fourteen to get an understanding of where are those problem areas? And we mapped those out uh to help with conversations with the public, with stakeholders, but also for our in own internal process of helping prioritize projects. Uh, so looking at just system wide and uh the stats up there are a five year uh period that we use for some of our public engagement efforts, but uh, like I said, we did a ten year analysis and in that ten year period, there are over thirty-six hundred crashes total reported. Um, of those forty-eight of them were fatal or serious injury crashes. So averaging about five per year in that ten year period. And I'll note there was more of an uptick in recent years in that uh ten year period overall. And then of those crashes, sixty-two were vulnerable road users. So people that were walking, biking or using a personal mobility device to get around. And then part of this safety analysis also included a peer uh community review as well. And what we found with that is Wilmer was actually a little bit lower in terms of fatal crash rates, but when you looked at serious injuries or even minor injuries, it tended to be a little bit higher than the peer communities that we looked at. So ultimately the safety analysis work though fed into uh the high injury network development. So you can see here the map of the high injury network. Um, kind of in two different tiers there. We actually looked at it from a couple of different ways. Uh, one, looking at just vehicle only crashes. And then one all looking at it from a V R U perspective or those vulnerable road users to um, map out kind of those two different networks and then combine them to get an overall high injury network for the system. And what we found with this, when looking at that vehicle, high injury network, which is the common tool used for these safety action plans, it made up about twenty percent of the overall transit system. Um, and one thing to note on this too, it looks at this uh entire system comprehensively. It doesn't matter who owns the roadway, what jurisdiction it's under. The big goal of this is to look at it comprehensively and understand um where are those concerns regardless of ownership and jurisdiction? And then, as I mentioned, one component of the safety action plans includes a transportation equity review too. So we mapped out varying uh demographic metrics. You can see them all listed there. I think there were ten in total to understand where are their higher concentrations of what we call indicators of potential disadvantage. And then we use this to uh feed into how we're engaging with the public and making sure we're getting a good representation from uh, the public that we're hearing from. And then also it went into um the safety analysis and understanding the crash metrics and how we're prioritizing projects and moving into the implementation phase as well. So now who did we hear from? And then what did we hear from those people as well? So in total, we estimated around six hundred and eighty-two interactions with the public overall. And this was through um, a combination of online survey responses, a lot of pop-up interactions from events that we attended. Uh, we had an online mapping platform where people were able to go in and add uh comments to specific locations across the city. Uh, we had a number of focus groups that we engaged with and then a lot of social media comments as well that were kind of wrapped into the overall with Wilmer. Postings for social media. Um, a few more uh stats there that I don't get into too much detail, but at the bottom there you can see uh, some of the initial thoughts that we were getting in terms of safety and how safe residents felt um on the transportation system, whether that's driving, biking, walking, taking public transit. And one of the um key points I want to point out with that is that first one there, that sixty-one percent. So overall sixty-one percent of survey respondents noted that they didn't feel safe uh driving within the city. And I'll note that this was kind of graded on a spectrum of how strongly they agreed or disagreed with feeling safe on the system. So that was kind of grouping all the ones that felt uh that either strongly agreed or somewhat agreed with not feeling safe to get to that metric. And then kind of building on that with what we heard. Um, so some of the key themes that we heard or one of the top ones was multimodal uh transportation infrastructure is something that we heard a lot about. Others included speeding congestion in the downtown area, uh accessibility accommodations. Um, and then some of the key areas looking geographically, we heard a lot about the mall area, uh locations around on County Road Five. Uh, the pedestrian bridge came up, um, kind of crossing the downtown area and then getting over to Robbins Island to this beautiful location here. Uh, First Street was one that came up a lot as well and the challenges that exist there. And then a couple of the elementary schools popped up at some of those key locations that we were hearing from the public. So taking all of that and now kind of switching gears to talk about the safety action plan itself and how all of the safety analysis, the equity review, the engagement work fed into the development of the action plan and what kind of the overall structure with that is. So I'll start by touching on this implementation matrix idea. And you can see there's kind of three buckets grouped there that I just touched on that really fed into how we looked at implementation. So the safety analysis work, understanding where crashes are, what the high injury network is, the equity analysis, and then what we're hearing from the community as well. And really the point of this was to establish those coal or core goal areas and strategies, develop that data-driven hierarchy of project prioritization. And then any applicable safety strategies for those priority issues that kind of fall out of infrastructure improvements, while looking at things like policy review, uh, future planning efforts, that sort of thing. And then outlining a feasible and fundable plan for implementation. Now I'm going to switch gears and hand it over to Mike Larson, who uh led a lot of the prioritization efforts and then concept development for the project.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. So the first step in, I guess, developing our implementation plan is really figuring out how we're going to prioritize certain areas of the system. Where should we focus our attention on making the transportation system safer? Um, and how we do that is we develop a scoring criteria. So for every uh, segment of roadway, every intersection within city limits, we put together a scorecard which uh we assess um, that location based on a number of factors, as you can see here. I won't go into too much detail, but really when it comes down to it, it's um, how is that location performing from a crash history? Um, what risk factors do we have that put pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicles at risk of crashes? Um, in addition to that, it's access to opportunity, really that equity piece. Um, are we nearby schools? Are we nearby homes? Things like that. Um, and then finally the project benefit or um, if we were to implement safety improvements at that location, what how much opportunity is there to make that roadway, that intersection safer? Um, if uh, there aren't very many treatments that aren't very impactful, that would work with the traffic or the location, so on and so forth. It might not score as high, so on and so forth. So put together those grades, if you will, for each location and then we can develop um, I guess, uh, this map, which tells us where um, some of those hotspots or areas of concerns are. Uh, the map shows, I guess, the total scores for intersections and segments within town. Um, red would signify a higher score or a more um, a higher prioritization score. So as you can see, some of the more busier or popular areas of town um tend to score a bit higher. Um, First Streets, Highway Twelve, Highway Five, um, some of those core roadways within town. Um, and just taking a look at the top ten, there are over two hundred intersections and segments that made that um, previous map of just a score above twenty out of fifty. Um, so honing in on those top ten, we, we worked with city staff, county staff, and Min Dot to work through what makes sense in these locations? What are some safety improvements that we could consider in some of these? Um, and I guess the one that sticks out here is First Street. It was by far highest uh scoring segments. Which really isn't too much of a surprise based on what we heard from the public um and staff. Um, so the last piece, now that we have these priority project areas where we really do recommend that we look at safety um improvements at these um in a very holistic sense. And what this table shows here is uh various tools or safety countermeasures worthy of consideration at all these locations. Um, not to say we need to do all of these or some of these. Um, it could be a mix and match in a lot of cases. Um, a lot of these are what um, from an engineering point of view, we would deem feasible based off of the space available, the level of traffic, um, so on and so forth. What's the right fit for some of these? Um, as you can see, a lot of them, uh, intersection treatments, uh, improved traffic signals, roundabouts, things like that, turn lanes um, on a corridor or segment point of view, access management, uh, reducing number of lanes, um, adding street lighting and then pedestrian and bike, bicycle improvements, whether that's better crosswalks, um, flashing beacons, trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, all these sort of things. So um, this table really encapsulates all of the tools which Aaron will go over in a bit of what um the city will have going forward um, when making infrastructure improvements.
Thanks, Mike. So like Mike was talking to, a lot of this is set up for each of the priority areas and kind of meant to be just general considerations of different improvements to implement along each of these segments or intersections. Uh, but part of the action plan also includes some design concepts as well to really act as a conversation starter to start thinking about how could we look at this location a little bit differently? What are some potential options based on the recommendations that are coming out of this study? So there's a thing called a countermeasures toolbox that we're including with the action plan that um, includes design concepts for some of the locations on the priority project list today. But then it also includes just a number of other um details and metric or countermeasures to implement moving forward. Um, regardless of it's a priority project or not, but just things to be considering about with any project located within the city. So we have these info sheets here that I provided a few in the PowerPoint slides uh to touch on some of the things we're looking at and some of the details that are behind some of these recommendations too. What benefit does it bring? What's an estimated cost? Uh, what goes in or what considered considerations go in it? A few images of examples. So this one up here is a road diet example, roundabout examples, both mini and full scale. And then curb extensions is another one we've touched on as well. And then another piece of it too is this idea of pilot opportunities. A lot of these projects are a significant investment that require uh, grant funding and outside funding sources to help implement. So how can we start approaching some of this um, with low budget um improvements that uh can be implemented kind of citywide in some instances. So looking at small scale localized improvements like temporary curb extensions, median refuge islands, you see a few examples there. Uh, mini roundabouts or traffic circles, um, just some things to kind of test it out and be able to measure and say, this was worth it. This is actually reducing crashes. Let's move forward with a more long-term investment in these areas. And we called out a couple of the priority projects that uh would be good candidates for testing out some of these priority projects. So you can see those on the map there in the bottom left. And then the action plan. So this is kind of looking at the non-infrastrucure items to it. So broken out by short-term, midterm, long-term and just some ongoing efforts. So this is really where it gets at the policy side of things and reviewing policies to make sure we're prioritizing safety and projects that are moving forward. Uh, it calls out additional study needs. Uh, the railways were coming up a lot in some of the engagement discussions we were having. So looking at like a rail quiet zone study, uh grade separated crossing study, things like that. To continue the conversation, look some, at some of these elements that will continue to improve and address the safety goals. And for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through all of those, but they are in the draft plan. If you want to dive into that table in more detail. And then one of the final components is this idea of a leadership commitment. So the city is committing to um, eliminating fatalities and serious injuries on the roadways. This is one of the requirements of the SS4A program. And what you see up there is where the draft commitment stands today. This will be going to city council upon final approval, but the current goal is to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries by the year twenty forty-five. And there is an interim goal, kind of that halfway point to have fifty percent reduction in the next ten years. And I included the draft resolution, which includes a number of statements kind of supporting that, the things that kind of go into it, how we'll get to that goal, along with that overall goal there called out on the right as well. And with that, I think we're going to take questions. So thank you. And yeah, we'll be here to take any questions if you guys have any. Yeah.
This was a number of years ago when the city engineers and foremen let the original for a traffic count designed traffic for four ninety-four people to traffic on First Street. That's a number of years ago.
Yeah, yeah, that's impressive. Yes.
Have you shared your information on Highway Twelve with Min Dot yet? Since they're planning projects, assuming you can get to them.
Yes. Yes. So part of the project is that um cross-jurisdictional coordination, right? Since we are looking at um roadways citywide, regardless of jurisdiction, we wanted to make sure we were meeting with both Min Dot and the county, especially because some of the priority projects are located on Min Dot or county roadways. So at Highway Twelve specifically, we did meet with the um Min Dot and had a really good conversation. And a lot of the recommendations we were putting out there were right in line with what they were already considering for the corridor already. So good question. Anything else?
Understanding what we're on about incorporated in walking paths where roundabouts start and stop.
Yeah. Do you want to touch on that?
Sure. Uh, great question.
To the engineer. Yeah, well, we hear that a lot about roundabouts and that's a fair concern. Um, uh, really what the data says about roundabouts and roundabout safety for pedestrians is they are quantifiably safer because at a roundabout, you're right, you don't have to stop. But vehicles are driving slower in a roundabout than they would through a traffic signal or like if someone ran a red light, for instance, or someone blew a stop sign, that sort of thing. So when you reduce the vehicle speeds, you reduce that amount of impact energy, reduce the, the um, opportunity for a fatal or serious crash that pedestrian. Um, another thing that roundabouts do is when you cross, there are only Another thing that roundabouts do is when you cross, there are only two conflict points you have to cross, one lane of vehicles coming one way, you get to the center median, then you only have to look at one lane of vehicles going the other direction. So, it's a little bit simpler in that sense, but you're right, you do have to have a level of trust or understanding with vehicles and drivers that they are going to stop and that they do see you. MINDOT has done a lot of study on that topic, and roundabouts do provide, I think it's between 20 and 25% crash rate reductions for vehicle to pedestrian crashes in Minnesota. So, the data does support it, but we certainly hear that comment a ton, it is a, it can be a barrier for some folks, it can make folks nervous because it is new and different, and there, there isn't a light that says vehicle stop, pedestrians go, so. Sure. Right, right, yeah. For sure, there, there's definitely a level of education that comes with roundabouts and pedestrians, and especially with, with the young kids. So oftentimes what we see in other communities is when roundabouts are put in near schools, the kids are taught how to use them with the SRO or whatever body, so you're right, everyone's got to learn, and especially with kids, so that's fair concern. Yes, yeah, you can, it, it is ADA law now that if you have a multi-lane roundabout, then you have to put in those beacons. But we certainly do see communities in other parts of the state put in those beacons where you push the button and the lights flash. So, yeah, if that's something we felt necessary, yeah. Good question. That's a good question, that would be project-specific, depending on who is roadway, you're working on things like that. The, the projects on the list are certainly aggressive. A lot of those could be paired with programmed projects that Public Works has planned or other entities. So, it's not to say we're saying go and spend $90 million, but yeah, a lot of those are grand ideas, to be fair. Yeah, go ahead.
And just to add on that too, one of the points of having the safety action plan is to now makes the city eligible for additional SS4A funding dollars to help implement these projects now and take it to that next step. So there's a few different programs within the SS4A program to help. Yeah, I think that really is where it kind of comes down to that. Project-specific and understanding what's kind of moving forward and having those discussions, if it's pursuing a funding application, having those conversations with other jurisdictions, if it's MINDOT, if it's the county, to help kind of identify what that looks like for each project. Yeah, so it's, say, in terms of bike lanes or just bike ped infrastructure, it was a little bit higher level with the recommendations coming out of this, noting it on corridors, especially related to the bike ped and trails plan that you'll hear an update on here next. I delve deeper into that, but making sure that the recommendations from this and looking at those priority projects, they're including the recommendations coming out of that bike ped plan too. I think a lot of what we're looking at actually fell in the like separated bike path, or like shared use path realm for the corridors, we're looking at specific to the safety action plan, but I know that next plan will get more into that as well. Yes, I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to understand the question, maybe keep building on that a little bit more.
Yeah. Complete streets is a, it's kind of an all-encompassing term where it, it, it's a roadway facility which serves all modes of travel, I guess. So, can it safely accommodate vehicles, pedestrians, bikes, transit, whatever else? So, I, I think what the plan does, at least the safety action plan is, in those list of countermeasures worth considering, we made sure to screen that bike lanes, for instance, on First Street, is it appropriate, is it not appropriate? So, what our plan does is list where they should be considered and where they shouldn't, and then the ped bike plan would maybe list more holistically, where does it make sense from point A to point B along this roadway type thing? Does that answer a little bit? We try our best. Right? Right, right, and that, that was a risk factor in that prioritization criteria where we looked at speeds on roadways, and a lot of the improvements on those roadways where we noticed higher speeds or heard a lot about higher speeds are focused on traffic calming, whether that's curb extensions or roundabouts or other engineering strategies to help bring down speeds.
What's the gap to follow up on that? A lot of cities in Minnesota the size of Wilmer have adopted a complete screen ordinance, which means that any project needs to look at all modes, doesn't mean you have to fund all modes, but it needs to be considered.
Yeah, that's an excellent, excellent strategy to help move these forward, having that ordinance in place.
All right, questions?
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're going to take just a five-minute recess to reset, and then we'll come back with bike pedestrian and trail plans. Thank you, thanks, Aaron, thanks, Mike.
Not working. Is it on? Okay. It's fine. It's echoing.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This is our last presentation for the evening. I understand that comprehensive plans are only fun to an urban planner, and there's a lot of information to take in. So hopefully we can take the second half up a notch, so Catherine, it's on you. I will try and crack a joke, but I'm not good at that either. However, if I'm at Intuition or Fox, I'm a lot of fun. So, okay, that worked, I got laughs. Catherine Gould with Bone of Me is project lead on our bike pedestrian and trail plan, Catherine?
Yes, good evening, everyone, we'll try to keep this short and sweet. Like Chris said, my name's Catherine Gould. I was, I'm a project landscape architect at Boltman Bank, and I served as the lead landscape architect for the bike pedestrian and trails plan. You have a draft of this plan in front of you, it's the big 11 by 17. We'll go through this quickly, but there's a lot more information there to review at your leisure. Oh, perfect, perfect, thank you. Okay, so what is a bike pedestrian and trail plan? Basically, this is a plan that looks at all active transportation modes in Wilmer. So biking, cycling, rolling, use of a walker, pretty much any way you can get around beyond driving. Our goals for this were to enhance safety, much like the safety action plan. We're looking at areas of conflict, places where people are having trouble getting around using active transportation methods, and thinking about ways to improve those spaces. Work's already been done in this realm, I mean, Wilmer has a, a big culture, I think, of cycling, and I know there's signage going up all the time for new bike routes. So really formalizing and building upon some of that community grassroots work was part of our plan. And again, this bike trails, bike pedestrian and trail plan will be an appendix to the with Wilmer comp plan. So when we kicked off this project last summer, we met with a group of stakeholders and formalized a vision for the system, for what active transportation could be in Wilmer over the next 20 years, the life of the comp plan. And the vision we came up with collectively is that the city of Wilmer will be highly connected by a safe and accessible system of sidewalks, trails, and routes that maximize the social, economic, physical, and environmental benefits of active transportation options for all residents and visitors. So that's what we're working towards with this plan. Our process had a number of steps, we went through evaluating existing conditions. This meant a lot of different things, both observations, field measurements of existing trails, crossings, intersections, as well as looking at that crash data that Aaron went through, understanding where there have been serious accidents, understanding the vision, which we just talked about, and what our goals are with this plan. Then we got into recommendations and how those recommendations would be implemented, so looking at prioritizing projects and how they'd be funded. We'll get into that. You've heard about some of this already, so go quickly, but basically the data that was used for the safety action plan, a lot of that we were able to use to inform the bike pedestrian and trail plan. So we asked people about transportation in general. So we asked people about transportation in general and about different modes. And of course, some of these places where people have the most trouble getting around in Wilmer, there's conflicts between different modes, places that are hard to cross as a pedestrian, places that don't feel safe as a cyclist, places where you're driving and you're, you're not really sure where the pedestrians or cyclists might be. So understanding how all those modes connect and relate to each other as part of community engagement, that was a big part of our process. There's a lot of good quotes in that packet in the plan of information from people telling us how they experience active transportation in Wilmer, just to hit on some, some highlights, some themes that came up again and again. People noted the Wilmer Bike Share Program and there was a lot of support and I guess recognition for that throughout the community. And something people noted, not all communities in the area or the size of Wilmer have. People spoke about the proximity to the Glacial Lake State Trail and the opportunities for economic development and just greater recreation opportunities that could be provided to the city of Wilmer in relation to that. People spoke in appreciation of having trails near the lakes. As you might expect, those are very popular places for people to ride bikes, go for walks. There's a lot of support for the community investing in bike, bike infrastructure. Folks who were encouraged by efforts that have happened so far would like to see more in the future. And we came to some agreements about high priority destinations and we'll get into that when we get to recommendations. Some themes of what needs improvements that we heard from public engagement were specific places for crossing, specifically First Street South, Lakeland Drive and 71. Also crossing the railways and delays that can occur there. People wanted to see more active transportation connections to schools and major workplaces. And also they are looking for more pedestrian and bike access to Robins Island Regional Park. We looked at existing systems. I'll go through this quickly, but like the mayor noted, First Streets and some of the highways have similar amounts of traffic. That bright red is, is kind of our highest category of average annual daily traffic. So understanding existing systems in terms of ped activity, traffic, hard braking events, roadway speed limits, speeding and that crash data by mode and severity, all that went into our plan. Using that data and data from the public, we identified places where there are missing links and gaps in the walking and biking networks around Wilmer. We identified key corridors, places that we particularly want to focus improvements because people are using these to get to places they live, work, go to school. Basically, the, the major transportation thoroughfares of Wilmer. We analyzed the existing system for how well it's working. This is small here, but you'll see in your plan, we've identified which sidewalks, which crossings are currently ADA accessible and what are not. As well as bike and trail systems which are up to mid dot recommended code versus not. So understanding what's there, what's working, where there are areas for improvement. Getting into recommendations, if you're interested in different types of bike facilities, I didn't, I'd recommend checking out the Mid Dot Bike Facility Design Manual. This is a, a huge document to, a part of it that we took away or that we used was looking at different bikeway typologies. So there's six different heights of bikeways that Mid Dot recommends, basically. The one on the left here. This symbolizes the most protection for a cyclist down to the least protection for a cyclist. The most protection is a separated bike lane. That's where the bike lane is separated from vehicular travel and pedestrian travel by some sort of curve. Sometimes there's trees, some sort of infrastructure that's separating the different modes and speeds of travel. All the way down to a paved shoulder, which of course allows for the least amount of protection for a cyclist that cyclists and vehicular traffic are right up next to each other without much of a barrier. So all of our recommendations in later maps in the plan follow along this gradient of different bikeway recommendations. Some recommendations in terms of sidewalk improvements. Recommendations for on-road bike facilities and off-road bike facilities. As well as some future bike facility loops. So identifying where recreation loops or connections could be made to allow people to travel around the lakes, around the city to connect to the Glacial Lake State Trail. Opportunities that in the long term could help build out the bike and trail infrastructure of the city. These all came together in a large recommendation summary. This is detailed in the plan and there's a whole table showing what each of these recommendations are. But basically it describes which of those types of bike and trail facilities we recommend for each of the streets we looked at as well as some specific intersection improvements. And last but not least, we got into prioritizing implementation. The top 10 projects that we recommend looking at are the same top 10 that came out of the safety action plan. This is to be efficient with our time, our money and to basically create the the greatest opportunity for improving safety and transportation in Wilmer. We also had, I think it's 20 to 30 additional recommended projects that are specifically focused on bike and pedestrian infrastructure. These are prioritized according to this table. They're given a ranking of one through five. One is lower impact or need and a high effort to implement, so it's a lower priority. Priority five is something that would create a high impact for the community and is of high need. So as an example, all 10 of those recommended projects there are at a priority five. I'll take questions. Yes?
You have that shy. I have two recommendations. You're missing an important funding source. And that's called the enhancement program or it used, it used to be called that.
Okay.
I've been retired a while and I keep on changing the names, but it's moved district eight, territory presentation partnership.
Okay.
It's been used several times and say the most recent being Highway 12 East Trail. And also went down wide sidewalks, the primary 12 to Lakeland Elementary.
Sure.
City got 80% funding to this program, so it's an important source. It's federal funding, so it could be gone tomorrow, but it should be listed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second, I would love to see in the implementation section something besides project listing, you know, talk about ordinances, maintenance of the system, safety and education of drivers and bikers pedestrians, trail amenities, those type of things.
Sure.
Besides projects.
Kind of the Sure, the, the administration and cultural aspects beyond hard design. That, that makes sense. Thank you. Anyone else?
I see you have a cost estimate with it on your slide.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a cost analysis that goes along with all of these? Like what is it possible to maintain with all the extra horsepower, the equipment used to clean and maintain all of these additional sidewalks and amenities?
Sure. So there's some really high level estimates within some of the tables towards the end of the draft plan. Those are focused on construction costs or I'd say design and construction costs, not long-term maintenance. So it would kind of be a case by case basis as you're, you know, picking a project to tackle and getting into final design. That's when you would look at that type of thing, but obviously it's an important consideration. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Catherine. Can we have a round of applause for Catherine, Mike and Erin? All right. One of the last slices we'll show is if you take a look at your implementation chapter, there's going to be a host of recommended strategies that we can implement. It is very nice to have partners in this comprehensive plan to make sure that we're not adopting separate plans, we're kind of rolling them all into one. And all of the plans that we have as an appendix speak to, to each other. So it's more to streamline our capital improvement requests in the future as well. All right. So just a few things. Just want to go over the public process one more time. On April 7th, we will confirm with city council our next joint work session. And then we'll go from there and lay out the rest of it. So we're trying to have the plan after public comment ends on April 11th, try and have the plan adopted by city council sometime in June. So right now it's tentatively June 16. I'll stop there. It's 8:00 PM. If there are any questions for us or city staff, other city staff will be happy to answer them too. If you have any feedback, there are cars in front of you for Six Streets For All with the Wilmer Comprehensive Plan. I see one right there. We'll collect those. And then if you have anything else, those for city staff to take in consideration, please do so. Again, you can always reach us at planning@wilmermn.gov or public comment as well. Discussion. Thanks, everyone.